Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the regular minutes of December 11th, 2017.
No moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion for the reorganization minutes of January 3rd, 2018, and there is edits at our places, so the motion is with those edits.
No moved.
Second.
Any further corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion for the executive minutes of January 8th, 2018.
No moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes, January 8th, 2018.
No moved.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome all to this roller coaster month of weather. Tomorrow 60 and Wednesday 30, and who knows what after that. Couple of things, and then we've got a few recognitions to do. I want to thank Chief Datchison and our police officers for the support they provided on Saturday for the Women's March in Morristown. They were on the platform at the train station, making sure, the platform is very crowded, so they're making sure everyone is very safe and did not get too close to the tracks. And then also, they were in Morristown, providing support to the Morristown Police Department, and they were leading the, bringing the head of the march. So I want to thank them again for the extra effort on that. A committee chair training on Monday, February 5th. Invites have gone out to all committee chairs and vice chairs to come for a training that's going to give them the tools to do their job effectively. You know, we count on our volunteers and the committees to do quite a bit of work. As I often say, what you see here is just the tip of the iceberg, so much happens at the committee level, so we want to make sure they have the tools. This is an advertised meeting of the Borough Council. We will have a quorum there, so we'll have some formalities, but for the most part, it will be a training session. And committee chairs, please spread the words on that. I also want to thank the Interfaith Council for putting together a weekend of events to commemorate the life and work of Martin Luther King Jr. And this included interpretation of Dr. King's work by several church leaders that was held at the Holy Family Chapel in St. Elizabeth's. It was very good to be there. And I had the opportunity last week, last Tuesday, to be in Trenton for the inauguration of our newest governor, Phil Murphy. He shared a great message and a vision for our state, and did a great job of thanking the service of Governor Christie for his years, not only as governor, but also Attorney General and at the county level. And I had the, Oscar is part of your report, are you covering the budget hearings and things like that?
No, well, yes.
Because I have a sheet somewhere, but I've lost it. Oh, here it is. So just a review of our budget schedule. Tonight, you'll be hearing an update of the Open Space Fund. Then on the 12th, initial draft, the budget is presented and discussed. The 26th, our department head hearings. On March 5th, we will have a special meeting for, which will do the revision of budgets as they were presented, and tying it down and make sure it's tied back to our strategic planning guidelines. The budget would be introduced on March 26th and adopted on April 23rd. So that is our schedule, so please mark your calendars. And now I'm going to come down below to do one of the fun parts of the job, and that is recognizing volunteers. Both our volunteers today, we're going to recognize, are both stepping down, or have stepped down from the planning board. We'll start with the, one with the shorter term, only eight years, inclusive of 2010 to 2017. Mike Kopus, please come forward.
Mike.
Mike, thank you so much of your work on behalf of the planning board. You still continue work on behalf of the borough, wearing other hats, but this is for the planning board. Your expertise when it came to trees, your insight for what is right for this town was well appreciated all these years, so thank you very much. Next volunteer, only had 18 years, year 2000 to year 2017 inclusively. Jeff Gertler, please come forward. It was an honor, just to, I only got to spend six years of your planning board time, but in that time, my respect for you grew at every meeting because of your expertise as it related to, you know, architectural talk, which, you know, I sat down a couple times and said, I would take a course from Jeff Gertler at any time because of perspectives that are so important, and guided us through the redevelopment process as we had some challenges with, you know, the development along Greenwood, which was a difficult decision based on our guidelines and what would do best for the, for the community. And you've really made it clear on what we should be watching for. It was tough to see you go, but I want to thank you for all your work, and I know we will see you around town, and I also want to thank you for the leadership related to historic preservation. So thank you, Jeff. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the current attention on flu cases, residents are encouraged to call the Health Department for an appointment. It is not too late to receive a shot for this year. Second, new residents should be aware that cats and dogs must be licensed in the borough, and all residents are reminded that cat and dog license renewals are due by the end of this month. A $10 late fee is imposed after that date. Next, Massa has applied for a grant from the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. This grant was established for municipal alliances to educate and engage residents, local government, law enforcement officials, schools, nonprofit organizations, the faith community, parents, youth, and other allies in efforts to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse in communities throughout New Jersey. And then this week is also National Drug Fact Week. Schools will be receiving information and new awareness fact every day. And finally, the Health Department is looking for individuals who want to get active and be part of a walking and health group. Once details are established, updates on the progress of this campaign will be provided through the Health Department webpage. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with the engineering report. There's going to be some work on Elmer Street for drainage, so we have eight bidders that have picked up to date, so we have a bid opening scheduled for February the 6th. The 2018 roadway reconstruction bid documents should be ready for advertising, advertisement by the end of this week, and that's real important. That means once those bid documents go out, we can really start working very early in the spring. They're awaiting final comments on the submitted bid documents from Morris County Hood on the Plain Street Reconstruction Project, and the Engineering Department anticipates advertising this project in mid to late February. Extreme cold weather and icing concerns had temporarily delayed the saw cutting operations on Central Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. The contract indicates they are set to resume this week, hopefully. Construction related to the Memorial Park Rink Storage Building is complete. Final building permit inspections are required, and that should be taken care of very quickly. Freshwater Wetlands Permit Application for DPW Yard or Advancing Boundary Survey has been completed and a status meeting scheduled for January 30th. New fencing at the new La Crosse Wall at the MRC is scheduled for installation later this week, weather permitting. They're waiting for proposals from solicitors, surveyors for the 2019 Road Program. Once they're received, evaluated, and awarded, survey field work will begin, weather permitting. Everything depends on the weather. 60 degrees tomorrow, we should get some good stuff going. Want to bring up some really great information about the building and the construction department. You know, we have a shared service agreement with Chad and Borough, and for the year 2017, they issued 64% more permits in 2017 than they did in 2016. 2017 revenue was $1,319,930, so the revenue is up 42% in 2017 versus 2016. One of the things that I think is absolutely remarkable is they had, they didn't count phone calls, but year to date in 2017, there were 20,360 phone calls made to that department and answered by those really great people. So I think that's important for us to understand what a great shared service this is. The DPW, the sewer department, of course, is snow plowing and removal. They're doing their annual sewer cleaning, truck and equipment maintenance. The mechanics department is one of the busiest down there because they're always repairing snowplows or getting them ready to go out. They actually worked on a fire department engine and got some one-mount, four new rear tires, installed a light pole back into the fire department vehicle, rescue force, so they've been very, very busy. Parks Department, if you notice, there's been a lot of accolades about the ice pond, and they have taken over the ice pond maintenance. They're working on the benches to get those ready for the spring, and the road department is working on snow plowing and removing and the salting, and the Christmas tree pickup. So that is all from DPW. One of the committees that I am liaison to is Shade Tree, and we had a lot of questions this past couple of weeks about the trees that came down on Burnett Road. And I asked Jean to write just a little bit about it. And the emerald ash borer is an insect that is responsible for the destruction of hundreds of millions of ash trees in the United States. It was discovered in Michigan in 2002 and has spread east to multiple Morris County locations. Though not yet identified in Madison, there is a high probability it's here. New Jersey State Forestry Service has advised Madison that it is prudent to begin removals of non-significant ash trees before they are infected. Infected trees die fast, which then become brittle and dangerous to the residents. Madison has two places which have a row of ash trees, Noe Avenue and Burnett. Noe's ash trees have been completely removed, and Burnett's have been partially removed. We are pressing the vendor, who is on her tree, to complete the job on Burnett and not leave free standing tree trunks. The Shade Tree Board is implementing additional notifications so that the residents know what is going on. And both streets will be replanted this spring with trees that have been specifically selected for those sites. So we want everyone to know that lives in that area that we are conscious of what happened and we're trying to rectify it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor announced the budget schedule, but I'd like to recommend that you come to the budget hearings. You learn a lot, and you know how your money is being spent, and hopefully you'll consider we're spending it wisely on services back to you. From the Payroll Department, the Internal Revenue Service has released updated income tax withholding tables for 2018 to reflect the changes in the new 2018 federal tax legislation. These new rates will be implemented in the next payroll on February 1st. The fourth quarter 2016 internet reporting of contributions has been processed for the pension systems. All approved new salaries for the borough effective January 1st have been processed, and all employees are using the time clocks daily and accurately, recording their time to the extent that paper time sheets from the individual employees are no longer being submitted to payroll. We continue to use paper departmental time sheets to review for accuracy. Thank you, Mayor.
Public Safety, Ms. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department has certainly been keeping busy with this recent cold weather, and they've ended up responding to a number of broken water pipes, natural gas odors and leaks, and carbon monoxide alarm activations. Hopefully, no one in this room was calling them, but they have been very busy over and above their usual roster of work. As Councilwoman Vitale mentioned, the DPW garage was very active in taking care of engine number one of the Fire Department. That engine went down over the Christmas holidays because of an unfortunate radiator blowout, and it had to be rebuilt. And during the time it was being rebuilt, it was obviously immobile, and DPW did all the things that Councilwoman Vitale mentioned. I think what's important to note is they not only did it, but they did it much more cheaply than if we had sent it out to a normal garage to have it done, so kudos to them. The Fire Department also applied for an assistance to firefighters grant, an AFG grant, for money to be used for replacement of our 1990 engine. We'll know about this in the fall. We'll know whether or not we've gotten it, that's when the announcement is made. So fingers crossed, it would be nice to get it. I have no report from police today.
Thank you. Media Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Borough Council, the Director of Business Development, work continues on the community space on King's Road. Interior framing will begin tomorrow, and we have some great new businesses opening in the coming months, including Bottle Hill Tavern and Madison Bagel on Waverly Place and Fruitables on Main Street. More details will be announced in the coming weeks. The Downtown Development Commission held its annual reorganization meeting last Thursday. Five members re-upped, Mark Fabianski, Peter Fleming, Deborah Starke, Gary Herzog, and Barb Short. And the DDC welcomed the new Commissioner, Melanie Tomaszewski, who has taken on a three-year term. New DDC officers for 2018 were elected as well. Mark Fabianski is the chairperson, Susan Whitehorn, vice chairperson, Brad Kramer, Treasurer, Secretary Leslie Lahusky, and Member-at-Large Russell Stern. The Taste of Madison is coming up. It will be held on Monday, March 19th, at Brook Lake Country Club. Planning is underway, and sponsorship letters have been sent. Tickets are now available at tastefmadison.org. Please plan to attend this signature Madison event. Planning for May Day 2018 is going to be held on May 5th this year. The T-shirt art contest details will be distributed to the schools early next week. And from the Chamber of Commerce, the 2018 Home Expo will once again be held in the spring at the Madison Junior School. The tentative date is April 28th. Loyalty Rewards Card Program, the new loyalty reward card has been printed and is for sale at the Madison Pharmacy. Caldwell Banker sponsored the program again, and 26 businesses appear on the card. It has been heavily advertised, and I tell everyone, you should get the loyalty card if only for the 10% off at the car wash. A new printed Madison map program will roll out at the end of January. From the Senior Center, things are very busy at the Senior Center. January 24th, they have a nutritionist coming in to talk about soups and nutrition. February 6th, they have a group called The Questers coming to talk about Revolutionary Morristown at 9:30, and for those of you who care, refreshments will be served. February 9th, the author Kay Newton, who wrote Incision Decisions, is coming to do a presentation at 2:00 PM about her recovery from surgery. And then on February 15th, we will celebrate Valentine's Day with a themed party called Love You a Bunch Lunch. For $10, you will feast on Rominales finest, and there is an optional secret Valentine gift game with a $10 limit. We are expecting a lot of construction to take place at the last week of February. As you may recall, the council allocated money for new windows at the Senior Center, which are going to bring in more light and make the space safer. And GPW has been the greatest help with other projects around the building as well. They plan to work together to replace the carpets in the public rooms and some offices, and replace the flooring with hard flooring. DPW is also helping to create more storage space for all the party equipment the seniors are needing with all the events they've been planning this year. And finally, The Friends has been reconstituted, The Friends of the Senior Center, and they are working on creating a formal presentation to turn the great room into a projection room with sound equipment. The goal is to create a multipurpose room for large events. From Recreation, I'll use this one. Ski Club made its first trip to Mount Peter on Friday, the 19th. There are over 210 kids enrolled this year and a chaperone roster of 35, both record highs for the program. The Rosedale Ice Rink has been open for several weeks already this winter, thanks to near-ideal conditions for skating, and a lot of great work from the DPW, and Peter Hiscano, our rink attendant. The Madison Basketball Association is in the middle of their Jersey Basketball Association travel schedule with 18 teams. They're also offering 16 sessions of rec intramural basketball on Saturdays and Sundays for boys and girls in grades one through eight. Very importantly, AEDs for all athletic fields and the corresponding storage units have been purchased and will be installed by DPW this spring. The background check system is a continued success with approximately 400 volunteers with active checks in the pipeline at any given time, and of course, the safety of our children is of paramount importance. The spring/summer field schedule is just around the corner, on March 5th, weather permitting. The schedule spreadsheet has been generated and is available for review upon request. They've been working with the programs, as well as returning rental groups to ensure everyone's needs are met. They anticipate having roughly 25 programs using 15 fields this spring and summer when the schedule is complete. And finally, the recreation calendar on RoseNet is nearing 260 subscribers. We encourage everyone who's interested to sign up for email and text alerts regarding program registrations, upcoming events, and the availability of the Rosedale Ice Rink and other recreation venues. And those texts are very good, they do let you know when the skating rink is available. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into the actual reports about water and electricity, I want to tell you that as part of my freshman council person orientation, Maureen took me over to meet the heads of the water and electric. And I must tell you, they are, it is an incredibly complex system of water and electricity throughout this borough that they are totally on top of. It's complex in terms of what they can do, their expertise is fabulous, and I had a personal experience with the Water Department, I thought they were testing me, because there was a water main break near where I live, and I was without water for a couple of hours. But they fixed it very quickly, they really did, they did a great job. For the Water Department, water samples were taken for the state mandated testing for total coliform, E. coli, volatile organic compounds. Thirty requests for locating and marking underground utilities were received and executed. Six curb boxes were checked, for shut-off for homeowner inside work or at the request of contractors for water that is for temporary use at construction sites. And this is all done, by the way, in freezing cold weather. These guys are out there, they're amazing. Anyhow, seven meter installations, meterhead or outside registers were installed, frozen meters were replaced. The department is continuing to work closely with San Zari, P.S.E.N.G.'s contractor installing a new gas main on Main Street, and with Joe Med, the contractor doing main work on Central Avenue to keep service interruptions to a minimum. Three calls for no water were received due to frozen pipes at resident homes. The Electric Department, 20 markouts were received and conducted since the last council meeting, as were three new services installed, 10 street light repairs, and 20 lights were repaired in-house. They're starting to install smart meters at large customer locations such as Whole Foods and Gerarda Farms. This will be ongoing until completed. On February 12th at 1:00 PM, a manhole cover blew off on Waverly Place near Chase Bank due to an underground service wire that short. The crew worked in pouring rain to restore the power at 5:30 PM. Chase had partial power for the duration of the repair and only experienced no power for a short period of time toward the end of the repairs. The crews are checking all transformer vaults and are replacing some pumps where needed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
None received, Mayor.
Okay, this is a first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to items on the agenda, and I'll quickly go through these, and I know some are tough to comment on if you haven't heard, but there'll be multiple opportunities. So on the agenda discussions, we have a Summer Hill Park Master Plan, and this is just the beginning of the conversation, so as you see things, there'll be more to come from that. Open Space Quarterly Report, we have the 2018 Electric Utility Rebate, and we have a little discussion and then a resolution opposing the proposed beekeeping regulations. And the resolutions that are on the consent agenda, which I will read in brief right now, and this will be also to help you understand the consent agenda. Resolution 48 is for the pre-qualification regulations related to the exterior work on the plaza here. We had the hearing at the last meeting, and this is now the adopting those regulations. Number 49 is support of Morris County Bike Share Project, and by nature of having a train station, having businesses here and access to the bike trails, Madison would be one of the sites for the Bike Share Program. Resolution 50 is execute a grant agreement with New Jersey for Green Communities Grant for $3,000 for a community forestry management plan. Resolution 51 is authorizing the collective bargaining agreement with IBEW, which is our electric utility crew. Resolutions 52 and 53 are authorizing contracts for gasoline and diesel fuel respectively, and those are both through co-ops, and so it's set pricing that's already been negotiated. Resolution 54 is another co-op purchase of salt, and as for deal with our storms. Resolution 55, another co-op contract related to tree removal services, and this would be with Tree King. Resolution 56 is lease agreement with the Boy Scouts. They have been storing some of their materials here in the basement, as St. Vincent's is undergoing some renovations, and this protects the Boy Scouts and the borough. Resolution 57, appointing Rand Boardman to position Administrative Secretary for Utility Advisor Committee. Resolution 58, appointing Jennifer Jeremiah to position of part-time violations clerk, and that is filling a vacancy. Resolution, I'm sorry, Resolution 59, appointing Brianna Diamond to position of Deputy Court Administrator, also filling a vacancy. administrator, also filling a vacancy, and by promoting her, created a vacancy noted in 58. Resolution 60, recognizing governor's counsel on alcoholism and drug abuse fiscal grant cycle, that's applying for a grant. Resolution 61 has been pulled, that will come back in the next meeting. That was related to architectural services of the library, so if you want to comment on that, please hold off to the next meeting. Resolution 62 is approving a raffle license for St. Vincent's. Resolution 63 is approving, authorizing the award of certain non-fair open contracts for the joint municipal court. And Resolution 64, as I mentioned, the beekeeping is opposing the proposed beekeeping rules, and you'll hear about that shortly. Resolution 65 is authorizing the electric utility rebate, which we'll have a discussion on. And then we also have resolution appointing unpaid interns to the finance department. So you may comment on any of those or those discussion items.
And a police vehicle.
I'm sorry. 67, yeah, and I had it written.
Police vehicle out of the special.
Right. Purchase of police vehicle from the special duty fund, and this is replacing a vehicle that has been in operation since 1990. Anyone wishing to comment on any of those, please step forward, state your name, your address, and the item you want to discuss. Anyone want to, and there'll be another open period coming later in the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go to our first discussion item, which is the Summer Hill Park. Tom, welcome.
Is your password?
The password is, oh, sorry. Madison. Or it's password. Yep. Tom Solaki is a Madison resident. He is on the Shade Tree Management Board and Parks Committee, and we'll let him share a little bit of his background as a architect.
Yes, so like the mayor mentioned, I am a resident of Madison. I'm on the Shade Tree Board and recently the Parks Advisory Board. I was brought, I was contacted by The Friends of Madison Shade Tree to take a look at Summer Hill Park because they had ideas about maybe we could make an arboretum there, maybe the town could, you know? It's large, they had potential donations for some trees there, and they thought, you know, let's look at this. And I had, when I first joined Shade Tree, kind of heard in the meeting saying, you know, if you ever need some work. So The Friends reached out to me and engaged in a conversation about looking at this and coming up with a plan. And this is not a clicker, right? I just have to hit it with my finger to make it. So to start things off, I just want to say that it's not a design. I'm not presenting a master plan. This is a vision. And the point of a vision is to get people thinking, so that when we engage the process of creating a design, we are, we're not stuck on the details. We get a pie-in-the-sky idea of what's possible, so that when a design time comes, which would be the next phase, we've already kind of flushed out some dreams that we might have, and then the process is, can we make it happen? So this is actually a booklet that we presented to them, but we go through the context of the park. I had two wonderful interns this past summer and an entry-level employee that did a lot of the grunt work for me, the research, the going out on site, hiking through, traipsing around poison ivy in Summer Hill Park. And so what we did was, and as affirmed this past summer and fall, was pull together a presentation, and that's what this presentation is. So we looked at Madison as a whole, where are the other arboretums? We have Frelingheisen Arboretum, Cora Harzhorn Arboretum in Short Hills, Reeves Reed and Summit, and we did a comparison study of Summer Hill, which you can see there on the right side, and those other arboretums. And they did a full analysis of, you know, what was special about each of those, what was different, what made it unique. You know, I'm not presenting all of that in this presentation per se, but when the time comes to design, we have that backstory, we have that information, so if a question arises, we can pull from that knowledge. And again, we also looked at the town. We brought it in another level, and we looked at the town context, and we said, okay, well, what are the different walking distances from here? Different schools, other open spaces, parks, the town center. And really, it is, you can see, I mean, it is kind of the core of Madison in a very interesting way. It's this nice little connector, a physical connection between otherwise disconnected roads, which is, you know, Ridgedale and Central, you know, you kind of go all the way around, but if you're walking, it's a really quick walk right through. Then we also looked at, again, this is just a diagram showing what we looked at, but the demographics, where people lived around the park, what were the different age groups, you know, what areas were maybe potentially more likely to use the park? Where are there more kids, where are more elderly? And again, this gives us a better understanding of how we can then move forward with the design about, all right, well, if we're looking at access, do we need ADA access in every entrance? Do we want to do it on this particular here? There's information like this that helps to tell the backstory about not only maybe what is wanted, but potentially what is needed.
Pull closer than I can.
Sure, yeah. We also looked at then, again, kind of zooming in even further into the site, into the topography. It's phenomenal topographic change we have going on here. It really goes from super, super high Summer Hill Park all the way down to very low, and that's really exciting from a design point of view because that just means opportunity. There's a lot of potential here, not only for use, but also from an ecological standpoint. There's really, this creates all these different microclimates and microenvironments to engage, if we're looking at an arboretum, different ways of showing plant communities throughout, you know, throughout Madison, throughout New Jersey, throughout Morris County. We also looked at the history, and this was, at one point, the mansion of Villa Lorraine. The estate is there, part of the driveway still exists, but also had the greenhouses. And one of the really amazing things about this site, it's one of the few areas in Madison that's left, you can see the greenhouse foundations. Now, there's not a housing development built over it. You can literally walk there today, if you're very careful, the poison ivy. I recommend going in the winter, but you can see them. You can see them terrace down the hill, and it's this amazing piece of history that the first time I experienced it was before I was ever engaged with The Friends, and we had just moved here, and we, my wife and I went for, you know, took the kids, and we're like, what's this park? You know, this hidden park, which if you ask most of Madison, probably 85 to 90% of Madison has no idea it's there. And I think that's cool because we, I think it's a really amazing potential opportunity, but it has this history, so that's another thing that we're looking to engage. This just kind of gives you an outline of, we did some historical parcel mapping, showing the existing, the black line, what the outline is now, showing the historical layouts and property owners, and how that changed over time. So design drivers, we use Madison history, we use people, vegetation and topography, and each of those kind of has the descriptions of what that means. And each of those then gets tied into what we're calling design elements. We're looking at programming, how is the park used? We're looking at circulation, how is it connected within and without? How is it connected to the community? And we did get our Trails Grant, which is very exciting, so the connection can begin sooner than probably most else can. Looking at thresholds, you know, again, most people drive by the entrances, not knowing that there's an entrance there. Most people walk by the entrances, not knowing there's an entrance there. And then looking at clearings, because it's forested, and you think of an arboretum as this tree, but clearings are equally as important. Not only can they highlight then those forest communities, but they can, you know, it's this expansion and contraction of space that can create volume out of nothing. And then finally, structures, you know, not necessarily building new structures per se, but potentially making reference to historic structures that are on the site and how those can help tell the story of Madison. So, beginning with programming, you know, again, this is a vision. This is us looking, throwing darts at a board and saying, okay, what is possible here, right? And so, you know, this is idea of informal and formal, a formal being that, you know, stereotypical park, garden, arboretum setting, where people are there and it's very structured, and the informal being, maybe it's a forested area, maybe it's a meadowed area. It's not a programmed space per se. And so you can see, we kind of have this central core, which goes from the top of the hill down, which is kind of how it's set up today. And looking at alternative, well, what if we actually took the entire top of the hill and really engaged those existing ruins of the, which are right in here, you'll see them later, ruins of the greenhouses? And maybe, so there's, maybe there's a larger core to this park that's the proventory, and then it, as you go down the slope, it becomes more natural. Then looking at circulation, there's, you know, there's this idea of looking at pathways and how we engage against the contours. So maybe that means steps, maybe we can engage more playfully with some slides. Then there's this with the contour, meaning, you know, using the topography. So instead of going up a steep slope, you can scissor around, you can loop around, and that could be easier for people who have more difficulties walking, small children. You know, this is the idea of ADA accessibility, just realizing that now, engaging it now before we come up with this whole master plan and realize, oh, you know what, we should have done this, we should have looked at the accessibility issue. And so, again, think, putting it out there now, so that as discussion continues about creating a master plan, it's all on the table. Again, just some graphic images on that. And this idea of thresholds. I am going quickly, by the way, only because I know we're tight on time. Carmella said, keep the clock, she said it very quickly, not negative. The threshold, I think threshold is one of the simplest and most powerful pieces that can engage the community, because, you know, right here, we have the grand entrances, the red dots, and we have the purple ones being maybe a formal entrance, and then inside, interior being these subtle thresholds. But this idea of engaging people visually and letting them know something's here. You don't have to touch anything else in the park right away. If you change the threshold, it engages, it invites them, and they can do their own exploring. And again, some of them can be subtle, and all it is is a clearing in the woods, you know, maybe just a reference to a pathway. Some can be more formal and really making a statement as you go into a space. And then there's this idea of grand thresholds, which is kind of funny because Madison's little park, you know, James Park, and they have these beautiful, that picture is, you know, James Park, these beautiful stone structures that are grand but yet kind of quaint in their own sense, and it's potentially, that's something else that can be brought into the Summer Hill. And then clearings, you know, right now, you walk there and it's very forested, except for the top. I think most people that have engaged the space and know it, especially in parks, know that there's a lot of non-native invasives. My kids joke that I love to say, "non-native, highly invasive." I guess it's my catchphrase, but there's a lot of non-native, highly invasive there. And again, that's an opportunity. We can potentially make new clearings, and there's an opportunity to replant it with native, or potentially, we let, we clear, do a clearing and manage one half and not the other, and show people what a non-native invasive does. Show them literally in your face, this is why, you know, you shouldn't plant maybe bamboo or Japanese knotweed, all these, because this is what may happen. And it's an educational tool. We let it happen, we want to teach people. Some can be formal and structured, you know, creating these formal spaces, others can be organic and informal, which is kind of what's there now. And then structures, I think this is a really exciting piece because we do have the historic structures that are there, and so you can see those kind of circles is where there's historic references, you know, whether it be where the old mansion was, or the greenhouses on the top or the bottom. And, you know, this is just, these are some image references, Ben Franklin's house down in Philadelphia, if anyone's ever heard, you know, they don't know exactly what it looked like. They knew where it was, they kind of knew what the style might have been, they had some references to layout, but they didn't want to reconstruct a fake Ben Franklin house. So they just built a frame, the size it was, and a general layout, so that people can go there and can experience it and engage, and it's not necessarily a reconstruction of the history, but it still allows people to understand the scale of the dwelling. And these are just some family people together. And maybe we leave them in ruins and just highlight them and plant them with specific things. It doesn't have to be a formal reconstruction. Maybe we don't want to. We don't, you know, there's stuff in the soil there from fertilizers, there's arsenic. There, you know, there might be red flags that come up, and that's okay if we know it ahead of time. And so the design isn't stepping back from something because we have to respond, we've already know it's there, so let's do a design that makes sense and makes reference to what's there. And again, maybe it's an educational tool to the community, to the students especially. Maybe we do a really cool lookout over the, if we do a clearing, and you can look out, which in the wintertime can turn into a sledding hill that's not on a golf course on a really busy road. You know, so, again, the topography can be a really engaging opportunity here. So again, the program diagrams, you know, looking at kind of what's there, no, this is a second one. This is not, this is not saying what we think should be done, this is just showing the possibilities, okay? And so this master plan, right, this pretend master plan here, you know, we have a specimen grove up top, with a cultural interpretation that's kind of at the nexus of the home and the greenhouses, and then we have a flowering forest edge where the open field is. Maybe the field stays as a field, and we can use it for recreation, and we clear out the woodland meadow, gives us opportunities to engage that. Maybe we have a lower arboretum along Central, which we can engage some maybe native forest communities. Instead of specimen trees, we plant clusters in groups. And then Forest Play, which is closest to where the school is, this little, you know, maybe a little woodland amphitheater where students, it's just a series of logs in a circle. And these are just, you know, some of those precedent images, kind of evoking some ideas of what that might be. And, you know, second layout, pretend layout, where it's a little bit more grand, and maybe we really place some more emphasis on this cultural interpretation. The great meadow reaches from the base all the way up to the top of the hill, so you actually get a really cool lookout and strata of seeing the forest edges as they grow. Maybe the Forest Play is a little bit more engaged and a little bit more dynamic. But again, it's just the possibilities, it's the idea of it's there. We have this giant park in the middle of Madison that can be something wonderful, and it's not meant to be, I don't, I personally don't think, you know, we should be raising monies and doing it all at once. I think this should be a community-engaged effort, where over time, different organizations come forward to assist in this and create something that is really a true Madison community park. So. Thank you. Questions?
So that was the six-hour class done in 10 minutes, so Tom, I appreciate it, and as I mentioned before, I would take a class from Jeff Gertler anytime, I would take a class from you anytime also, because this is the second time I've saw this presentation, and it's very, very helpful. And again, to reemphasize, what you've set out here is how the thought process, how a vision can be developed, not the final vision, so.
And that's very important because we talked in the beginning about this being a community engaged opportunity, community-engaged opportunity, right? Last thing we want to do is come in here and say, this is what your park should be, right? Because the community, a space like this type of park, which is nestled in all these different neighborhoods, needs to be designed by the community, and that's, that's.
So along those lines, what are your next steps? And are you planning to have a broader, you know, sort of public invite to come in, sort of hear this again, but maybe on a slightly more interactive type scale?
Right. I mean, so, I guess that's a two-answer, two-answer question, or, you know, it depends what The Friends, how they want to engage us, you know, because I'm working through The Friends, right? The typical next step would be, just like you said, it would be a community-engaged effort, what we call a design charrette, you know, big tables, we could have paper and pens at, which we've done some informal ones with some of the town groups, and we had the Parks Comm Environmental. So it would be that type of opportunity, because that's where you, you know, people can write down their dreams some more, and then we, and then as a design team, we distill that down. And that's when we start actually engaging and saying, you know, what are some of the realities? What can we, what should we do? What can we do? And then from that master plan, the idea is, in speaking with The Friends, it makes sense, from that master plan, it can just be given then to the town, and the town uses that as a guide, how they will, right? And, because, you know, there's little, we can't say it has to be this way, right? But what we can do is a design exercise to show you how we think it should be.
I would suggest you actually start with one thing, which is offer some sort of scheduled tours of the property, because a lot of people in this town, including myself, never actually walked through it. I've driven through it once or twice, but it is a very big park. I think it'd be worthwhile to actually bring people through, so they get a good idea of what it is they're even looking to design, before they start just looking at a piece of paper.
We hope.
Austria, then John.
As we did when we opened up the trails at the MRC, we hope these trails will be completed in time for Trails Day, and it's usually in June, the second week in June, so that's when we would do tours and have a little map and explanation.
And that would be actually a really great opportunity to then engage the public and start that discussion about, hey, you know, you've been through it now, let's start talking, and, you know.
John?
Well, I admire how far you've taken this. When Kathy Koltis grabbed a bunch of us from Rotary a couple of years ago to go in there and scrape out invasive species, it was hard to envision anything else going. and scrape out invasive species, it was hard to envision anything else going on there, except cleaning it out. So the fact that you guys have taken it this far and have created a vision is phenomenal. So I encourage, Pat's lies to take it the next step, and let's do something. I think it's going to be beautiful if you do something great.
Ben?
I assume these plans were available to us?
Yes, and that's why, I didn't know what format I should send it in. PDF, I can.
PDF.
Yep.
Good. Maureen?
I'm highly allergic to poison ivy.
As am I, as am I.
Be careful when you open the PDF.
So what are we doing with the poison ivy?
Oh, I got an answer. I got a famous answer, and I go from Parks to Shade Tree to Friends, and here goes, Nancy's laughing at me. Goats. They love poison ivy. You know, you read about this, you know, Ben, you're right, it's very, very true. They could come in, and they can eat away.
We have goats in Madison.
All of this piece of stuff, the poison ivy and whatever, it would be a great opportunity for, you know, to bring a couple of classes from, you know, Central Avenue and whatever. They just get let off, and then they get taken home.
In the meantime, we have the Trails grant, so the Trails will be put in place, clear of poison ivy, and then we'll have to make sure we maintain them too. I know there's some people in the audience that want to comment, but this is not, we're not at that point with this, this presentation. We will have a second comment period, so you can comment at that period, at that point. Any other? So our, kind of our next steps is, again, we have the Trail Grant, so that will be worked on, the idea of getting, you know, with a, opening the Trails to get people walking through the park, that we can then organize the feedback sessions and work on the vision, and understand it's a master plan, and sometimes master plans are implemented over months and sometimes over years. Thanks, thank you for all your work, Tom, it was excellent.
Thank you, Tom.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I think it's very important to understand how the Friends and Shade Tree have been instrumental in really getting this started, and getting somebody as good as Tom to explain this, and to spend as much time, you know, to kind of put this together. We had a meeting of HPC and the Parks and Shade Tree and Friends and whatever a couple of months ago, and it was, it was very successful to bring all of these committees together and get their input, but you guys did a great job, so appreciate you starting this off.
Thank you. All right, Open Space Trust Fund quarterly report, Jim?
Councils received an Open Space report for the year, its activity for the year 2017, and copies are being passed out to the public here, they're also available online on RoseNet. I encourage anyone watching this online or here this evening to visit, as Councilwoman Bailey said, the annual budget process page on RoseNet, it'll have all of our budget documents, including this one, readily available, all in one location. In addition, you can compare the reports this year to last year and the year before, it's all in one-stop shopping. So this report is created to show the activity for 2017, and then show the anticipated inflows and outflows for 2018. I'm not going to read every line. The major inflow is the tax levy, which is a little over $600,000, and there are revenues for field rental and user fees, and other revenues oftentimes, when we have a project that requires a match, you'll see those match revenues on the inflows line, the outflows line. Outflows section includes the MRC debt payments, those are debt payments for two separate items, it's for the land, and for the turf fields, the actual debt schedule is included in this report, and then an explanation on the back page of the, how the financing started, how it happened, people will recall we had short-term bonding, and short-term borrowing, and how we eventually converted over to all long-term debt for the remaining portion that we have. So the most significant outflow is that MRC debt, there are other outflows as well. The way the outflows are appropriated are really four ways. It's either through a resolution, through an ordinance, through a contract, or through a budget appropriation, the debt is kind of done through a budget appropriation. So those are the four ways that we typically appropriate funds, and in the outflows, you'll see where the reference to the resolutions and the ordinances, the MRE, Common Area Maintenance Fee is contractual at $10,000. We, at the beginning of the year, we're at $128,000, that's a little bit different than what the audit says, because there were deposits and appropriations in transit. The available balance at the end of 2017 is $257,000. There is $300,000, which is not included in that $257,000, because it's restricted funds for remediation, land acquisition, and offer recharge from a gift that the Borough of Madison received. Also not included in that $257,000 is the $500,000 Green Acres Grant that we were fortunate enough to receive in 2017, that's dedicated to pay down the debt associated with the land at the MRC. You will see down below where $145,000 in 2018 anticipated inflows, that's using a portion of the Green Acres Grant funds to pay for the land portion of the MRC debt. The 2018 anticipated budgeted activity also includes the tax levy, field rental fees, interest, and the known projects that we have or will be paying for in 2018. So with that, I'll take any operational questions, and I know that Councilwoman Bailey wants to talk more about the, I'm talking, I'm here to talk technical, she's here to talk strategic.
Okay. Thank, oh, thank you, Jim. Are you ready for me to, yeah?
Nope.
Okay. This fund was overwhelmingly approved by the voters in Madison, 2004, to provide funding for projects the residents wanted. The land was purchased to create playing fields, to provide for passive recreation such as trails, to protect our source of drinking water by providing open space. The funds were used to save the Luke Miller House, and to preserve and protect the historic Hartley Dodge Memorial and the James Library Building. All these projects contributed to the town's character, and why Madison is such a desirable place to live. An advisory committee to the mayor and council reviews the funding requests, and then submits recommendations to the mayor and council. The committee met last week, and a number of potential projects were discussed. To date, we know that the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts will be applying to the county and our committee for grants to restore the clock tower of the James Library Building, the home of the museum, which the Borough owns, the Borough owns the building. This building is a cornerstone of our historic downtown. We also began discussing how to finance the reskining of the turf fields, and down the road, we may need to discuss turfing in other field like Rosedale, because our recreation program begins, is growing constantly. We also discussed the need for our parks to create conservation management plans to get rid of those invases and plant the natives, to make the parks more accessible, so Maureen can go in those parks. So we also know that the east wing of the Hartley Dodge Memorial has not been restored, we couldn't afford to do that, so hopefully we will be able to help with some open space and historic preservation grant money. Meanwhile, we continue to pay down the debt of the open space purchases and the turf. Now, I remember when we didn't have this source of funding, and there were a lot of complaints and frustration over the condition of our parks, our fields, and our historic treasures. The trust fund was, has provided, and will continue to provide relief. In turn, Madison will continue to be a special place. Thank you.
Thoughts or comments or questions? Pat?
Yeah, I'll just, well, Maureen, I'm sorry, Austria covered most of what I typically ask, but I always ask at the beginning of the year, what are the projects? Typically, we see some anticipated work. Right now, we're seeing nothing, although you did mention a few things. So in terms of the Museum of Early Trades, it'd be good from them if we could get a long-range plan in terms of the other things they want to do, because we will need to slot them in the way we have in the past, unless they think the clock tower's the last thing they're going to ask for for a while.
I asked for that, I met with Deb Starker last week, I already asked for that.
Okay. Because, I mean, the way I always look at this is, you know, this is a, we refill this fund every year. Right now, we're bringing in $635,000 from taxpayers, bringing in another $75,000 from user fees and rental, so it's over $700,000 coming in, with the $500,000 in Green Acres Grant paying off a portion of the debt every year, we're only going to be subtracting automatically about $200,000. So that's going to leave a half a million dollars a year for at least the next three years. And as I said, right now, we don't have any projects projected, so I think it's important that we start to take a multiple-year view of how, you know, that money could possibly be utilized.
We've got, we discussed the list, I mean, we do have quite a big list, but we've got homework to do on those before we list them publicly.
I think we just.
It would be nice if they shared them, because we ultimately decide what goes forward.
Ben, and then Maureen.
Thank you. I agree with Pat, but with a couple of footnotes. One of which is having, currently sitting on this committee, a lot of these projects just come up. You know, someone shows up and says, "I've got this project," and the committee reviews it, and may find it acceptable, and then brings it to the council for council approval. So a five-year plan is, by, almost by definition of how the committee is operated, is going to be a bit incomplete. The other thing is, we're, I've been talking to Zach Ellis about this reskining of the fields, because every time there's been a conversation on that subject, when someone says, "How do we pay for it?" I always hear the Open Space Trust Fund. So I figured it was time to see if this is really feasible. We're talking about a great deal of money, we'd be overlapping, if we bonded it, we'd be overlapping two bonds, the bond that is currently outstanding and paying off the initial skinning, and then we'd have another bond for the reskining, some notion of the magnitude, it's estimated reskining of fields approximately $1 million, we have two of them, it's $2 million. So it's a reasonable amount of money.
I think it's one for both.
I heard it was one for each.
One for each.
One for each.
No, it shouldn't be that.
One million for each.
That, I, I am only quoting what I was told. I have no great expertise in this subject, but.
That is one area, though, I think we should get a lot more information about, like, somebody should really, like Bob Vogel at the Engineering Department should take that and come back to us this year, so at least we have that as a long-range item.
I am starting to work with Zach, I'm doing exactly that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Because it is my concern that if we end up, we're still paying the bonding for the land, we're paying the bonding for the initial work, as I said, and we'll be paying bonding, assuming we go that route, and I don't know what else is available right now, we'd be going that route and paying bonding for reskining the fields. And we should get an exact number. I've been hearing approximately a million per.
The other question is, do they know how many more years they think the fields currently have on them? Because they've only been in four or five years?
No, it's 10 years. So it's an eight, it's an eight to 10-year, it's an eight to 10-year lifespan.
There's a little bit of a question, and again, this is anecdotal, as to whether we make it to 10. The fields are very well-used, as you probably know. If you look at them in certain directions, you can see seams beginning to appear, there are some worn sections, so I have no idea. Is it good for another three or four? The one thing you can be sure of is, we'll pay off the initial bonding in 2028.
Yeah.
It's not good for that long.
No, that's.
So by, it's going to happen that we're going to be bonding twice for the same facility. And the Open Space Fund, as I say, may well be the place. One other thing I should mention is that the one thing the committee doesn't do is it doesn't shop projects. Projects come to it, and I think that's very important, because residents have to know that it isn't a group of people trying to figure out how to take this pot of money and spend it. It's a group of people who are sitting there and encouraging those who are involved in recreation, and open space, and historical preservation, to know and come to this committee to see if their projects are viewed as being worth funding. So that's, I just wanted to clarify those points.
Maureen?
So I was just going to point out that the turf fields were, you know, supposed to last eight to 10 years, but I don't think, as Ben said, I don't think we're going to get to 10. And they do cost a million apiece, and I think this is a time for a group of citizens to step up, it could be a reconstituted Madison Athletic Foundation, and start the job of fundraising a portion of the costs of the turf fields, because we do have, we do have things in place that says, open space cannot pay for the entirety of a project, that the sponsoring organization, the group that wants to have it done, has to pay, what is it?
20.
20%?
Yeah.
20%. So some, somehow, to get these, these turf fields re-turfed, we're going to have to come up with $400,000 as a match, potentially a match for open space. And if we, if we use open space money to re-turf the fields, then we don't have open space money for anything else.
I think, all very good points, I just want to cover two quick things, one as far as presentation, Jim, is maybe do a revision of this for posting. Anticipated outflows, we are committed to the Summer Hill Park Trail Project, because we have to have a matching fund, but we know that that $10,000 or $20,000 is well short of what we will spend this year in that fund. So I think we're given a wrong feeling of avail, you know, that there's going to be other projects that will come along.
Correct.
Right, and so we should have a holder in there for.
Museum.
Museum, or whatever it might be, but planned projects, anticipated projects, whatever you want to call it, just because that's $764,000 for, you know, people might think, oh, is that going to be the year-end amount? No, that's not going to be the year-end amount.
No, I mean, this, the problem is, the committee just met last week.
Yeah.
And Jim's report had to come out today, but there just wasn't enough time to. And we're going to have another meeting in February, and we should then be able to turn over the list.
So that we can, yeah. And my other thought, and it's not an easy one, is, are there other Luke Miller opportunities of purchase, historic giezment, and sale?
Well, I do have an idea that I threw out, that I have to find out from, I guess, our legal, whether it's even legal to do something like that, so I do have another idea about how to preserve.
Does it sound?
I'll work on it.
All right. Pat?
Yeah, so, yeah, my final comment is over two things. One is, you know, typically, as I said, we've sorted the year with some number of projects that were consuming either all or most of the money. It's a little surprising that, like, again, we've got nothing, because as we look forward, we do have some big-ticket items that we think we're going to be funding, so at least I'd like to get those on the map, or on our radar, and some sort of rough numbers associated with them. Because the other thing that happens is, I mean, we collect this money regardless of what projects we have to justify in any given year, because that's the way the tax is structured. And if we are not really looking forward and sort of making sure we're earmarking money for things that we do think are important, then just kind of whatever comes along, there's money there, and people may think, well, absent anything else, we might as well do this. And if we took a step back and looked down the road and said, well, we know we have to do this, this, and this, and we have some other big things like the East Wing Hartley Dodge, we might want to reserve some money for those before we start giving it out to other projects. So I think having a bigger list that we're scaling down is better than having no list, and just kind of one at a time asking for project money.
The clock tower project is estimated at $100,000.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll look to submit a revised report in February, once we have more projects
in line, we'll also talk to Zach, and let's try to get a conditions report of the field.
And then, you know, going back, and Austria can take back to committee, the idea of the three to five-year, and again, and any plan. of the three to five-year. And again, any plan, it's, you know, year one has a high level of certainty, year two, far less, year three, even less. But at least gives an idea that we are forward-thinking and anticipating and not reacting.
Great. Thank you. Electric utility rebate. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. The electric utility rebate program has been, to my way of thinking, a terrific success. In 2014, this council, actually, it was in 2013, the council unanimously approved the program based on what was really anecdotal information, that there were a number of residents who were having difficulty paying their utility bills for financial, obviously for financial reasons. So what we put in place was a means-tested rebate, i.e., you apply for it. Your income is judged relative to appropriate levels that are gained largely from what affordable housing levels look like. And if you are, if you are approved, you receive $150 against your utility bills. Initially, it was 100. And in our first year, we had 353 applications. Based on that, we decided to increase it. And in 2016, it went to 150. And in that year, we had 379. This last year, we had 385. So it's a meaningful number of households that benefit from it. And the cost to the town is not overly significant. I mean, it's, you know, you can't speak of $57,000 and say it isn't meaningful. But in the scheme of the overall operation of our electric utility, it's not a great deal of money. What we have done in the past is allocate $100,000 to this program. We've obviously never gotten near that level, but it's good to have a safe cushion. So we propose that we do that yet again. Keep the rebate at 150, set aside $100,000 for that purpose. A couple of other notes about this. Processing these applications has been easily absorbed by current staff. So there's been no increase in administrative costs for having this program. And I think it's also important to emphasize that this particular rebate program is completely separate and independent from the dividend that you've been receiving this year. So whereas the dividend is paid to all residents, the rebate is paid only to those who satisfy an income requirement. And again, I'll just emphasize, I mean, I think it's a terrific program. Four years, we've allocated $177,000. I have to believe that's made a significant difference to a large number of households. Thank you.
Comments or... All right. This is Resolution 65 listed in consent. Next, opposing proposed beekeeping regulations. Maureen, do you want to...
So the New Jersey Department of Agriculture has put forward proposed regulations that would regulate beekeeping here in New Jersey. And I would remind everyone that the state insect happens to be the honeybee. These regulations, while I think well-meaning, severely curtail the ability to have a hive, whether in your home or in a community garden. It regulates the number of hives to, that can be on a certain amount of acreage. The regulations would result in individual beekeepers in Madison being unable to keep bees, as well as taking away our ability to have the hives at the community gardens. So, you know, I talked with, I talked with a number of people from the community garden, and they asked that the council stand up with a number of other communities and ask the Department of Agriculture to revisit their regulations and take into consideration the honeybee.
Thank you for bringing this up. And several municipalities have already passed this resolution or a similar resolution. I was a bit surprised to see it come across the table in a time when the honeybee is in crisis. And I just was wondering whether this was addressing a problem that doesn't exist. And so I think...
No, I think actually what this problem sets, looking at the regulations, I think what happened is somebody got stung. And, no, seriously, somebody got stung. Because if you are allowed to have a hive, you have to construct an impermeable 10-foot wall. Now, how those bees are going to get to the flowers to pollinate them and make the honey, if they can't, if they're hemmed in by a 10-foot wall, is, your guess is as good as mine. As well as the hives cannot be located within 25 feet, oh, no, 85 feet of recreational facilities, such as the MRC, which abuts the community gardens, trails, paths, schools. It's rather draconian, in fact. And given that the honeybee pollinators are responsible for our food, we would not have food if it wasn't for pollinators. And we need to be supporting them rather than taking their, taking their land away.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And it's Resolution 64 on consent. Onto the next agenda item. Ordinances for hearing. Would the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, January 8, 2018. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public in question. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,800,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2018 road reconstruction projects, related work, and miscellaneous projects.
I open the hearing for ordinance one. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2018.
I will second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 1-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there over the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 2-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $705,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2018 milling and overlay project.
I open the hearing for ordinance two. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2018.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 2-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there over the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law.
Ordinance 3-2018, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $35,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for LED light fixtures.
I open the hearing on ordinance three. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 3-2018.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 3-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there over the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance four, 2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $42,400 from the General Capital Improvement Fund and $10,600, let me try that again, appropriating $42,400 from the General Capital Improvement Fund and $10,600 from the municipal open space trust fund for improvements to Summer Hill Park Trail.
I open the hearing for ordinance four.
Good evening, everyone. Samuel Marzo, White Street, Ridgedale Avenue, Westerly, and dozens of other streets throughout town. I'm here to speak about Summer Hill Park. Uniquely, I think I'm the only one who's probably spent his entire childhood playing in that park. Fourth generation to do so, and I've probably been in every square inch of that. I hope someday my son will be playing in every square inch of that park. And as I sat here and listened tonight, I wonder the direction we're heading in that park as a commercialized attraction center located in a residential community. The park that we're talking about is completely surrounded by homes. Although it was commented many times about its size, it's not the largest park in town. Additionally, there's always been one trail through the center of the park. There's no parking, per se, anywhere for attracting people from all over to go to this. It's always been a walk-to, walk-through-the-middle type of a park, and it had a woodchip path for much of my childhood. And many of the residents that backed up to that park historically always took care of it, myself included. What I fear going forward is that when we create these attractions, I'm sure the presentation was well-intentioned and thought out. There was talk about slides and steps and various other things that just totally seem out of keeping for what has been and what I feel should be moving forward. I have no issue with cleaning up the park, taking out species that don't belong there, maintaining the trail that has always existed there. I have no problem with that. Adding additional trails and making some sort of attraction for our community and for people from outside of our community to come in, like other arboretums that I've also visited, I have an issue with that. There's no parking. It's just not set up for it. And there are other locations in town that better suit that need. For example, the park in between the soccer field and the baseball field on Rosedale, which extends all the way out to the Borough Garage, which is larger and doesn't join any residences. I think that might be a better location for this type of a project because there's already parking lots and infrastructure that would suit something of this magnitude that you're discussing. The park that exists currently frankly wouldn't even exist without the goodwill of my father and grandfather, who on multiple occasions took steps to preserve it. And that's why there's a plaque, small but still there, on Ridgedale stating such. Most recently, my father, and previously, when the entire park was for sale, my grandfather took similar action.
One minute, Sam.
And allowed the park to be bought by Green Acres. Otherwise, the entire park would be homes. So the park was preserved for the intention of residents in Madison using it how it's always been used. It was also mentioned sledding. I've sledded on that hill behind Summer Hill Park. My father has, his father has. If you go back far enough, they used to refer to it as Donkey Hill. And I just feel that there's, there's very few people in the room that understand and know the history of the park. And I know many of the residents that adjoin it, if not all of them, have not been included in this discussion, and I feel we should be. So I think it would be appropriate to pump the brakes, take a breath, and speak with the adjoining residents, and come up with a better plan if it's going to involve extending beyond the path that goes down the middle and cleaning up the park. So I implore you to pump the brakes on this one and...
Time, Sam. Thank you.
Okay.
And, yep, just, actually, go ahead, Chris. Come on up, and I'll clarify some of the comments. I forgot to mention, it's three, keep your comments to three minutes. I do give a one-minute grace period and cut at four.
Yeah. I'm Christine Shore, and I'm here, I am a resident, but I'd like to respond as president of Friends of the Mass and Shade Tree. Because I think that...
Make sure, talk to the council.
There's already, there's a serious misunderstanding on Mr. DeMarzo's park about the scale of any of this. I think what Tom is describing is, by and large, exactly what you'd like to see, which is cleaning out invasive species, clearing out foundations from greenhouses that may have arsenic or broken glass in them, and managing the plantings that are there in a way that identifies them to users of the park. So we're not anticipating, we're not suggesting putting in an arboretum to compete with the Frelingheisen Arboretum. We would like to use the front part of the park where there are already trees, just not necessarily native hardwoods. And as those die out or identified as invasives, we would like to replace them with native canopy hardwood specimen trees that would be properly labeled and have information available to park users so that they would understand better the contribution of canopy trees. So it's not no trees, or, and it's not asphalt, and we're not expanding parking because in a green acre space, you can't construct things. You can't add parking. We're not asking to. And we certainly don't want to make this a commercial enterprise of any kind. What we'd like to do is reintegrate the park down the road with the input of everybody. So I think that Tom made that very clear, that this is a vision that we started with of the space, which is now pretty messy. And as we proceed over the next decades, reintegrating parts of those parks so that they reflect native plantings and so that they would get more use from the neighborhoods and not just be the private preserve of the few people who know about it. So we want to make it a more integrated part of Madison, not a commercial enterprise to attract outsiders. And we're not proposing increasing any sort of impermeable surface. No parking, no paved paths, no great slides because we can't build anything. But if we cleared the meadow, it would be better sledding, for example. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry. It's, there'll be, just as a reminder, this is a ordinance just for the trail grant part of it to fund, and this is, we're getting funds from the county. This is, the discussion was heard earlier. There'll be far more input, and that will be from the neighbors, from residents, and others. I'm sorry, Sam. It's one shot. Anyone else wishing to speak? Paul?
Paul Alaco, 25 Greenwood Avenue in Madison, on the Parks Advisory Committee. I think we need to find a little more information out on the trails. What type of trails? Are you putting in more trails than that are currently there? Are you coming through on different areas on the property? And the timeframe, again, on putting the trails is June?
Actually, we'll capture these questions, and after the hearing, you can, we'll answer those questions. Okay?
Certainly, Mr. DeMarzo's point is, if you're putting in new trails, that's an expanding. If you're fixing the poor condition of the existing trails, that's a little something else. I just wanted to, is it just going to be woodchips, or are you going to put a better type of trail with packed gravel or something and that type of thing? Maybe we just need a little more information.
Thank you. Ostry, can you address...
So basically, the trails are exactly the...
So basically, the trails are exactly the same trails that were always there. So if you come to go with the park through Ridgedale, there's a parking area, there's a steep hill. That steep hill now is difficult to climb down with woodchips, so we're using another -- you know, we're using compacted dirt and gravel or something, and maybe graduate. It's going to be graduated in order to get down safely. Then it just continues to clean up the old trail, that all that inside part. There'll be a marker that says, "Here to your right is the back of the Luke Miller House," and it'll explain its significance. There's a trail that goes out to DeHart because that was the whole -- basically, the point of one of our grants was to say that this is a neighborhood park where you've got people from DeHart, from Central, from Ridgedale, from Fairview, all have entrances into this park, and we want to clean up the trail. So once you make -- you can go down there, but you make a loop back up to the roadway. And then there's a new trail that goes across to the Green Meadow. And then there is -- you see the Green Meadow, you walk along the Green Meadow, and then we create another trail from the Green Meadow back to the parking lot rather than having them walk directly on the street. Because the Green Meadow, which is also a playing field, is used heavily, and there are a lot of cars that go up there by our recreation program. And we need to provide a soccer field for the young kids. That is our soccer field, and there are cars up there. So it's basically rehabbing the existing trail. We're not putting in a lot of new trails. We're only putting an extension so that people can get to the parking area safely. And hopefully, it'll be ready by June.
Next.
I just wanted to -- well, Jill Rhodes, 78 Ridgedale Avenue. As somebody who lives extremely close to this park, I just wanted to stand up and say, when I first moved here, bought my house, I thought, wow, this is so awesome, really cool park, very close proximity. And I tried to explore it, and I hit lots of down trees, and I was a little -- I'm a walker, so I walk at pace, and I was a little afraid of those trails, so I've avoided them. So I just want to stand up here and say, thank you so much for doing these trails. I look forward to a rehabbed park. And as one of the community members who wants to use this space, I'm thanking you for considering us and doing something for it. So I'm just up here for my thumbs up for the renovations of the park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Oh, I move ordinance four, 2018.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, yes, John.
Having, having listened to Sam and everybody else, you know, that talked about this, I think there's room for getting together and discussion. This, I understand, is a concept tonight. This wasn't the design. This was the concept. So I think during this interim period when we're going to design, there's time for people to get together. And I will be inclusive and make sure everybody does that. Okay?
But just so that you know, the hearing and what we're passing...
It's just the trails, yeah.
On the trails.
Yep.
Which...
And so people can walk through, and then we can start talking about it.
And then they can start talking about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Pat, did you...
That's a -- I just wanted to point out that it's a complete accident of the calendar that we're discussing the vision and this trail grant. This is something completely different, and we probably should have gone off in engines.
Yeah, it was -- we wanted to share the work of Tom, but it is two separate, two very separate conversations, in a way.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance four dash 2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we're on to invitation to discussion number two. So this is when you may comment on any topic. Again, the same rules apply. Step forward, say your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to stop at four. Jesse, happy new year.
Happy holidays, happy new year, folks. Jesse Esposito, Community Place. Two things. Mayor, I sent you an email. I don't know if you received it about the sites and the trash and the problem. Fortunately, it has been removed, thank God, and I'm not having to deal with this at the moment. The only thing is, I need to know what's going on with our parking on community. Are we taking care of this parking situation? I spoke with my landlady, who had talked to Lou Ricchio from Housing about signage. He stated that he turned it over to the town. He has nothing to do with it. It's on the town now. So please update me, sir. Please. And as to the house across the street at 16 Cook, we really need to do something, so it's just out of control. Even though the kids are very respectful, the kids that visit them are not. The parking is horrendous again. Everybody's back from vacation, from the holiday, and boom. Now we're back to the same stuff, lab music, cousin. There's still a fire hazard in this house. It has not been addressed. I really want our department to go there and inspect because it really needs to be done. He's building a smoke room over the garage. Don't know about it. All I know is what I've been told by the current residents, and I see them working over there. Am I right?
Okay. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, sir.
As you walk back, we'll answer your questions. Just one second, Sam, and then you can step up. So we still need to do the subdivision and transfer the -- that has to go to the planning board.
Well, the agreement with the housing authority is that they would order the survey, turn the survey over to us, which has not happened. When we get the survey, then we had agreed we would take the subdivision application process off their hands, and we would do it. So we're waiting for the survey of the street, the public street or the right-of-way, in order to prepare the documents to then present to the planning board to subdivide the street from their -- well, not the street, but the passageway from the housing authority property. And then in terms of 16 Cook, we did have the fire code official, Captain Nun, was out and inspected the property together with the inspector, with the owner of the property, and we are working on that.
Okay. So we'll -- and just as a reminder, that once the borough takes that over, it will have the regulations of many other, you know, four-hour parking, so it's not going to eliminate parking, but it'll be enforced above. Sam?
Good evening again. I just wanted to clarify and...
State your name once again, even though I -- sorry.
Sam DeMarzo. All different locations throughout town, but I live on Hoyt. I don't object to the path that runs down the middle being resurfaced, be it woodchips or whatever. If other paths would be infringing closer upon the homes on any of the four adjoining neighborhoods, that, I think, should have been run by residents in a manner so we would have been aware. So if you're not doing that, that's one thing. So down the middle, no objection. I would point out that the last time there was work down, the path did veer from the middle, and it has -- needs to be corrected. Again, being very familiar with the park, it currently does not cut straight down the middle anymore. They looped it.
Yeah, we have a loop.
So the loop cuts up towards residences, and I feel that it should be returned to down the middle the way it always was. This way, it was equal distance between the houses on Central Avenue and Ridgedale. As to my comments on the remaining parts of the presentation, I was seeing it for the first time, so I could only take it face value when I see slides and other things, structures. My comments were in reference to what I saw, and what I saw I did not like. I would also enter that the other locations suggested are much better suited for such an attraction. Parking and infrastructure for an attraction already exists on Rosedale, and it doesn't impact residences. So if that was the objective, that is a much better location to do it. And that's all I'll have to say about that for tonight. Separate issue, completely shifting gears. I'd like to bring up the topic of twice-a-week garbage pickup. It seems like the budget crisis that initiated the twice-a-week suspension during the colder months has ceased. It seems like there is money in the budget for items currently, so I would think that we can resume normal garbage pickup, similar to all the surrounding towns. And I'd also like to add that recently I saw the largest rat I've ever seen running down Central Avenue. And I do think there is a correlation between once-a-week garbage pickup and health. So I think that there should be some studying done to the budget, and I think we should find a way to resume twice-a-week pickup all year round. And this is not something that's unique. All of our surrounding communities that adjoin us all have twice-a-week, and it's much better for health and safety. So I'll leave that for discussion.
Thank you. Good timing, as it is budget time, so we can consider that as we go into budget process. Any other comments? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we will move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Have a hearing date set for February 12th, 2018. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting cons.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance five, 2018. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 15 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Downtown Development Commission.
Mayor, I move ordinance five dash 2018.
Second.
And this is just a clarification on the borough ex officio position. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
And ordinance six?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $33,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of replacement or bulletproof vests.
Mayor, I move ordinance six dash 2018.
A second then. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolutions R. 48, 2018 through 60, 2018, and 62, 2018 through 67, 2018.
I'll second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
And there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. We do have new business, yeah. Yep, you're flipping the pages too fast.
Current fund, we have $473,461.68. General Capital Fund, $2,108.60. Electric Operating Fund, $203,690.45. Water Operating Fund, $75,601.31. Water Capital Fund, $22,251, even. And trust, $72,376.61. The total is $849,498.64.
Mr. Mayor, I move the voucher list.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
And new business. I'd like to announce the following appointments, not requiring confirmation from the council for Planning Board, Thomas Lewis, 15 Crossgates, for a four-year term through December 31st, 2021. And Ann Huber, Environmental Commission Representative, 54 Maple Avenue, for a three-year term through December 31st, 2020. And I'd like to make the following appointment and request council confirmation for Community Garden Advisory Committee, Kirk Mole, Nine Albright Circle, three-year term through December 31st, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I move the appointment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John?
Aye. Oh, aye, I'm sorry. Sorry. Aye, no, aye.
And no, I got the aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. All did. As much as I hate to do this, I move that we adjourn.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry.
Aye.
Let's move forward.
In Rosedale.
Yes.
Okay. That's going to require some clearing.